This is the piggyback to the last item you considered. It sets forth what was previously in the code and adopts it in a resolution.
And some public hearings, any members of the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion? The one thing I would add, the resolution as just pointed out to me is it's a one step to process. There's no public hearing. It's not a two-step process, so this is buying us some flexibility. Any discussion or do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 21-19?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Any discussion?
If we could, yes. The discussion would be the same basically for the 1519 ordinance that we consider possibly as an option to remove the gate over at the IRL Park. That would, I request that for consideration.
We can look into the hours that we talked about and the gate, and we'll get back to you probably at the next meeting or the next meeting.
If that could relieve that situation, that would be helpful. Thank you.
No other concerns or discussion. Kelly, if you'd call the roll.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Colleti?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution 2119 is adopted. Ordinance 2519, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance which would amend the corridor overlay zone by removing the C designation and addressing the width of the COZ. City Attorney, read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 2519, an ordinance amending the land development regulations, amending Article 5, zoning districts, Section 50402, specific regulations by district, COZ, corridor overlay zone, providing for codification, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date.
Report, please.
Just a brief report. This is not a policy change. It's really a clarification in the text of our land development regulations of how we identify the corridor overlay zone. So the map is unchanged, we're just describing a little bit better how we identify that for clarity going forward. Here to take any questions.
Thank you. Some public hearing, I'll open up to that. Any members of the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions of staff on this item? I heard Vice Mayor.
Are there any projects right in, currently in the process that you're aware of that this would affect?
No.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Colleti?
The only question I have is we're describing it as 330 feet from the center line on either side of two roads. What is the benefit of extending that to other lands within a parcel that are farther away from the center line?
Well, we want to identify there's a parcel that straddles the border of clarifying that that's in the zone or not in the zone. So we've interpreted to date as it's being in the zone. This really just puts that in the code. The corridor overlay zone is mostly an area that deals with the buffer and the immediate frontage and the standards and how it interacts with the state roads. So the outlying areas, it may not have very much impact at all on the applicable regulations. It's the frontage that really is impacted.
Right, that's why I don't understand why we would include the back lot area, so to speak.
To think of a really large parcel that fronted 44, for example, and also had a significant portion outside of that, we're just clarifying that that is in the district, the overlay zone.
Okay.
So my line of questioning is probably in the same vein as Commissioner Colleti's, but, and I think this came up at planning and zoning, I just happened to be at that meeting. So lines 60, 61 where it talks about all properties partially contained are considered wholly contained. And so what I think was brought up at P&amp;Z was, you know, if you've got a property that has, you know, they're 329 feet off of the road, but you know, they got one foot in the COZ and then the rest is over here, they're wholly contained. I know that's an extreme example, but I guess is there flexibility within this for those type of situations? Like, how would we navigate that? Because that seems unduly burdensome.
It could apply to things like the administrative variance. In that case, it was just a really, really small amount. But really, in that case, I don't know very much if any of the regulations would apply. If you just had one foot that was in, you'd have no frontage on a road, you wouldn't be obligated to a buffer, you would already be meeting those. So I don't know of any properties that meet that criteria.
Yeah. Okay. I think that was the same thing you said at P&amp;Z, too. I just had to ask. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just as a follow-up. So basically what you're saying is that you don't want an applicant to try to get out of meeting COZ requirements because his property is not wholly within 330 feet. It would have that effect. Thank you. I feel better.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 25-19?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Kelly?
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Colleti?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Ordinance 25-19 is adopted. Ordinance 26-19, second reading and public hearing, which if adopted would amend LDR Section 604-09 by annex special event parking requirements. City Attorney, read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 2619, an ordinance amending the city land development regulations, amending Article 6, Development Design and Improvement Standards, Section 60409, Off-Street Parking, Loading and Driveways, Providing for Codification, Providing for Public Hearing, Providing for Conflicting Ordnances, and Providing an Effective Date.
Thank you. Brian?
Clarify a couple of points. As formalizes special event parking requirements as currently written, it's in front of you that if the event's in a special parking district, replacement parking shall be located off-site on a permitted commercial site within 1,500 feet of the property hosting the event. I know there's been some discussion about possibly expanding that or clarifying those limits. That's certainly something I think, you know, we can talk about. An option that would give more flexibility would be simply having it within the special parking district. Secondly, if an event is not in a special parking district, which is fairly uncommon, but it does happen, the replacement parking as written would need to be onsite. There really is no provision for off-site parking for a special event outside of a special parking district. That could be expanded to allow off-site parking within a certain distance such as a half-mile, for example. But as written, it would need to be onsite. The Planning and Zoning Board voted 5-0 to recommend approval. Staff does recommend approval. Here to answer any questions.
Okay. This is a, go ahead. It's a public hearing, I was gonna just open the public hearing first. Any members of the public wish to speak on this item? I thought you may have a few comments.
It's time to go.
I know.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'll keep it brief so you guys can get to go home at some point in the not-too-distant future. Scott Stager at 120 Flagler Avenue and representing the Flagler Avenue Business Association tonight. Had a chance to talk with Commissioner Colleti, just sort of in full disclosure. Challenge with Flagler Avenue in particular, it's a little over 3,000 feet long from beach to bridge, call it 3,500 feet. What I'd like to suggest is that we include the entire business district in a place where you could put replacement parking. To put that, for example, I have 12 markable parking spaces in my place at 120 Flagler Avenue. I am 1,578 feet from the Flagler Tavern. So should they apply for a permit and my business is closed and I said, hey Sherman, you can use my parking spaces down there for your event, that would be 78 feet roughly outside of this, I think, just including the entire business district. And the same thing for Canal Street and other areas, I think it just makes sense. I don't think anybody's trying to push off into the residential areas, and I think if you include the business district, that prevents them from going off to the side streets and trying to buy somebody's front yard. And it puts it into the same sort of situation where you're still using commercial parking. It's parking that wouldn't be used otherwise, and I think it alleviates the challenge you're trying to achieve here. And so that would be my suggestion, is that either you expand the distance from 1,500 to say 3,000 feet for Flagler, or you just make it a little bit easier to codify, which I think would be in the business district or the special parking district as it may be.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Colleti, I believe you have some comments.
Yes, I did meet with the Flagler Association on this, and I agree it should be expanded. I suggested within the special parking district. And I do like the other option that the staff has come up with for other areas that might not fall in a special parking district. It was also a request of the Flagler Avenue District that these standards apply to all the special parking districts, which is only fair. So we're doing that. I think we should support the changes. My understanding is we actually have a couple options on the wording. If that could be explained to us, I think there's three of them.
You can change it from within 1,500 feet to within 2,500 feet. That's the first option. The second option is to say within the special parking district. The third option is to say within the special parking district or within 2,500 feet, because you may just fall just outside the boundary.
So that would be option three, which would be closest to what we spoke, or I spoke of.
Okay. Any other discussion by the Commissioner?
My question would be, I mean, we had earlier discussion if we were gonna have, close Flagler, we're gonna park down at MDC. I mean, that's completely outside, so we're eliminating those options. I don't think, I know the parking enforcement officer I work with doesn't have a little wheel chart to where he can measure 1,500 feet or 2,500 feet, so it's truly not an enforceable item, I don't think. And I would think that if we looked at language that would simply put approved by staff, because it has to be reviewed by this planning board prior to the permit being a thing, I think that would be an easier thing. It kind of opens up what we have available out there, both to the merchant and to us as far as commercial parking goes, and that may be a better answer and maybe even more clear. You know, because they may want to park vehicles at Kmart and shuttle them all up to Flagler. As long as they're providing the service, I mean, why would we deny that to them? So I think with staff approval might be a more appropriate language to have in that ordinance. That's all I have.
If I can just devil's advocate on that for just one minute, because I like where you're going with that. I like the, giving the flexibility, because your point is well-made about the MDC. But does that open up a loophole of, I mean, I guess this is where we trust staff to make sure it doesn't, but does that open up a loophole of, you know, buying the, you know, renting the dirt cheap parking out at the Kmart, knowing no one's ever gonna actually be there, it's just checking the box so we get it through the event thing and we really haven't solved the issue? I think this is kind of trying to force an actual solution, so I don't disagree with you, but I just, that's the concern, that we would be putting on staff to make sure they were able to say, no, no, it has to be a reasonable, a reasonable solution that will actually work to relieve the parking needs that are created by the special event, so.
I don't know, on a previous issue, you said you trusted staff.
I do.
So, I mean, you either have your professional staff and they're, you trust them, or, you know, you accuse me of not, so I'm just, I think, I don't think that they would do something like that. I certainly hope they would, and I certainly don't think they would. And I think it would at least give us a start in that direction, and if we found out that there's, that these things were coming up too often, then maybe we'd need, would need to tighten it up, do it at that point. But realistically, nobody I know of has a measuring wheel and they're gonna go out there and say 1,500, 2,500. I don't think the parking officers would really know what a special parking district is versus a business district. And so, I mean, you're creating an undue burden on them to try and force something, and they try to enforce it, and then you get somebody who's pretty savvy on that going, oh, no, I was in the business district, and so, you know, it just alleviates some of the issues that staff may have in the future. And, you know, this would be kind of a catch-all, kind of clear-cut way to define it, is just let staff make that recommendation.
Would you guys speak?
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, what is the, we're looking at a parking space that somebody can reach out and obtain to fill a requirement. What is the requirement needed or definition of that parking space?
It'd have to be an established, you know, not necessarily paved, but in a legally established parking space, meaning like the 10 by 20 dimensions, plus or minus, and an approved location that's acceptable for parking.
So is, if my friend lives three blocks away from Flagler and he's got clearly a parking area for cars in front of his house, can someone use that?
Well, I think with this, we intended to exclude residential uses of somebody renting out their driveway or allowing use in their driveway, so this specifically would exclude that, but.
So, okay, excludes it, but it allows, what about other zoning classifications? Have we determined what zoning classifications will be allowed or not be allowed?
I think we said that off-site parking has to be on a commercial site.
Okay, so the Marine Discovery is not a commercial site, is it?
That would be commercial.
How's that, I believe that is some sort of, is zone commercial?
Well, it's a non, it's a non-residential use, so.
But that's not a zone, that's not necessarily zoned commercial. So the reason I'm bringing this up is, I have a lot of concerns about this. I think we're making an emotional knee-jerk reaction. I understand the problem, but this is one of those things that we're gonna approve and we're gonna have to, it's gonna have to come back at least a couple times. We're creating a situation, what bothers me the most is we're creating a situation where some people are gonna get it and some people aren't. It's subjective. I like the idea of you apply for a special, special events permit. It's tangible, it's there, you either meet it or you don't. I think this subjectivity on parking spaces is gonna get creative, and I think it has a lot of problems. Scott's here, I'm surprised no one else is here. I'm inclined to vote for it tonight, even though I think it is fraught with all kinds of problems that are gonna come out of it, and I don't think it necessarily solves the problem, because I'm, I'm not gonna park 1,578 feet away from where I wanna go if I can park on the block 200 feet away in a residential area or on a swale or on a side street. So I'm just not sure that we're gonna accomplish the goal here. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Just a brief statement, Mr. Mayor. I greatly appreciate that we've come to this point, and Mr. Stager, on behalf, you're representing the Flagler merchants, I greatly appreciate their willingness to possibly compromise, or at least come to the table and talk. Because we do have a problem our residents have been encroached on, I appreciate their patience and willingness and tenacity, and hopefully we can come together. Yes, it will be a tedious process if we decide to go there. I think nothing good is easy, but again, I want to thank all the parties involved. We have a very small, constrained city. We do like to party, we just don't like to make a mess, and I think we can hopefully get there somehow. I'm glad we're talking, but thank you. Appreciate it.
I want to make one comment. I'll make very clear, we're not just talking, we're actually creating ordinances and creating rules. This isn't just talking. So what my point is, who's gonna know of six parking spaces in back of a business 1,578 feet away from Flagler Tavern, and what's their incentive in parking there? So I just, I've said my piece, thank you.
Question?
Yep.
And for Commissioner McGurk, do we not have an opportunity, even though we create an ordinance tonight, to tweak it if we need to? Or find something better if we create?
I think we're, I think we're gonna create a lot of confusion tonight, because it's not solving, actually solving the problem.
Yeah, I'd just add to that, of course, we can always change things. We can always go back to the well, but, and I've often said, you know, perfect is the enemy of completion, and so, but Commissioner McGurk raises some interesting points, and so I'll say my piece in a bit. Commissioner Colleti, do you have any other thoughts on this?
Yes. The special parking districts are well-defined, they're on a map, and the parking enforcement person can just bring it with him, and he'll know whether they're in or outside of the district. Commissioner Hartman has raised an interesting point about the distant off-street parking. I don't know if that's occurred since I've been in town here for the last 20 years, so yes, we would have to address that issue. But I do recommend we approve this as a step in the right direction. Flagler Avenue residents on either side of Flagler Avenue need help. Here we have a merchants' association that's willing to help. I've discussed it thoroughly with them. They do support it, as you have heard, so I just think we should move ahead. Once again, it's a step in the right direction, might not be, it might not be the last one. I urge all my Commissioners to support it.
I'm, okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just in the sub-nine, when we're outside of the special parking district, whoever makes the motion, if you could either address that specifically, whether we're inserting the word onsite or inserting a distance limitation when you're outside of the special parking district?
So, so the motion maker, we need to clarify alternative C is what I think I've heard at least from one person, and then sub-nine, whether or not that's, that's a whole new addition, or there's some, there's some language on that, right?
So Brian's staff report was that it's intended to apply onsite?
Yeah.
If that's the intent, we need to actually say onsite?
Gotcha. So I'm, I tend to actually think on this one, I agree with kind of all that's been said. Commissioner McGurk raises good points. I would have expected actually more engagement and involvement from those Flagler merchants, because I do think this will impact them possibly in ways that they may not quite understand yet. And we're doing a lot, which puts a real burden on those businesses to kind of be monitoring what we're doing on a daily basis, and, you know, so stuff may slip through the cracks for them, and that's on them, but it's on us a little bit as well. So I actually liked where Vice Mayor was going with giving, giving staff some discretion. You know, hard and fast rules work until they don't, and so I do trust staff, and I know you do as well, Vice Mayor. And I would be okay with adding some of that language, whether that is an iterative process, or whether or not we try to craft that tonight and put it in. I don't know that I can support this as written, even alternative C, I can only support alternative C, but I don't know that it goes, I don't know that it gives us enough flexibility to make sure that we're not, we have to fix the issues, I just don't know if this does it. I'm not disagreeing that the residents are impacted, I'm not disagreeing that there's, that there's issues to be addressed, I just don't know that this fixes them all without causing other, without causing other issues, so that's where I'm at.
I would like to move this subject along.
Okay.
We can't make it perfect, as I've heard said before. I'll make a motion to approve it, option C, 2,500 feet.
And what about the language that Brian, that staff recommended in sub-point-nine, that those spots be onsite? If we need?
I've discussed it with them, and I can support that.
So that would be a motion to take alternative C and on sub-point-nine inserting the word onsite. Is that clear?
Yes.
And just to clarify, option C is within the special parking district or within 2,500 feet?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion?
I'll second that motion.
We have a second. Any more discussion? Not. So Kelly, if you would call the roll.
Commissioner Colleti?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
No.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
No.
Commissioner McGurk?
No.
Ordinance 26-19 is denied.
Would I make a motion?
Vice Mayor.
That we include the language that says that's staff approval on both Section 8 and Section 9?
Just so I'm clear on that, you're saying, basically an extra sentence that says like, or with staff approval, or how, help me out with that?
It would have to be with staff approval, not or.
So it could potentially say replacement parking shall be located off-site on a permitted commercial site approved by city staff?
Yes.
Okay, so eliminating the rest of that 2,500 feet in the special parking district?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a with staff approval after commercial site, basically?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, just so we're clear, to?
And would that also, would you want the same change to nine as well?
I was about to ask that, yeah, on that side. All right, so a motion to take alternative C, amending the last sentence, replacement parking shall be located off-site on a permitted commercial site with staff approval, striking the rest of that language on sub-point-nine, adding the onsite as in the previous motion. So we have a motion by the Vice Mayor?
Second.
I have a second.
For discussion?
Yes.
Either chief or sergeant, do you think that that's enforceable, given that language? Who knows, right?
They try.
Yeah, they're gonna park where they wanna park anyway, so. All right. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I think we've discussed this quite a bit, but does anybody have anything to say on this?
No, just all these do come back to us for approval at some point, so we do have that oversight.
The special events do, yes?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, we had a motion and a second. Kelly, if you would, call the roll.
Commissioner Colleti?
To come to some type of conclusion on this, I will vote yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordinance 26-19 is adopted. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, we, you're clear, you got everything you need on that one. Ordinance 27-19, second reading and public hearing with annex 7.9 acres of property located on Creek Shore Trail. City Attorney, read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 2719, an ordinance annexing into the city of New Smyrna Beach, 7.9 plus or minus acres of property located east of Creek Shore Trail between Leitha Street and Turnbull Bay Road, providing for redefining boundaries of the city, designating the property within Commission Zone 3, providing for public hearing, providing for required filings, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Staff report.
So Mayor and Commissioners, this is an annexation, future land use map amendment and rezone. Those are the, there's three agenda items. I have a brief overview, the same information, we'll carry forward to those next two, so we'll keep it brief. The applicant is here as well. This is a 7.9 acre property on Creek Shore Trail. The land is currently undeveloped. The applicant's plan for the property is to incorporate into the Florida Days development as an open space as part of what would eventually be Phase 5 of that development. So. well as address updates to the portions of Florida Days that have already been annexed into the city and are currently listed as future development on the current approved PUD for Florida Days. So you have the annexation piece, the future development, they're going to bring all that together in a PUD amendment that has been submitted for staff review. The first step in that process is to bring this one piece in by annexation and then the, again, the amendment will proceed. Just a couple items for information, the current county future land use is rural, the current county zoning is A2A, which is Rural Agricultural Airport. The proposed city future land use is residential estate, which allows up to one unit per acre, which is consistent with Florida Days. And the proposed city zoning is PUD planned unit development, which is also consistent with Florida Days. P&amp;Z Board voted 5-0 to recommend approval on May 6th, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, any member of the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
I'm the applicant, I didn't know if you wanted to hear from me or not, but I don't have much to say.
All right.
My name's Mark Rukowski, 22 East 8th Avenue, I'm representing Hickson's, who are Florida Days developers. Jake Hickson's with us here today. And I just want to emphasize that the purpose of this 7.8 acres is really to be left as open space, tree preservation and a buffer for the railroaders right next door. So Hickson's wanted to buy this property to keep it being developed by anybody else. So if you have any questions, I'm here for you.
Okay, thank you. Does any other members of the public wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion by the commission? Or if not, do we have a motion to adopt ordinance 27-19?
So move.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Kelly, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Clody?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, ordinance 27-19 is adopted. 28-19, the companion ordinance, same thing, city attorney will read the ordinance by title only. Not the same thing, but...
Ordinance number 28-19, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, changing the future land use designation of 7.9 plus or minus acres of land located east of Creek Shore Trail between Letha Street and Turnbull Bay Road from county rural to city residential estate, providing for amendment of the associated comprehensive plan maps to show the area incorporated into the city, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Anything to add to the previous testimony? No, public hearing, any members seeing none? Discussion by the commission or do I have a motion to approve ordinance 28-19 is read?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion, seeing none? Kelly?
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Clody?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item G, is a second reading and quasi-digital public hearing of an ordinance which if adopted would rezon 7.9 acres. City Commission will conduct a quasi-digital public hearing. Now's the chance to disclose any ex parte communications. We'll begin with Vice Mayor.
Other than I've probably driven by it.
Okay. You drive around a lot, don't you?
I do.
Jason?
I'm trying to understand what he's really trying to say in that driving.
Yeah, right?
I get lost a lot.
I have no ex parte communications.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Clody?
None.
Just in the essence of full disclosure, I haven't met with Mr. Hickson. It wasn't about this, we may have talked about it though, I don't remember if we did, but no substantive testimony to apply, but just getting it out there. Mr. Fields, you're still under oath, are you familiar with this rezoning?
One second.
Sorry.
I'm going to read it.
Oh, yeah.
Ordinance number 29-19, an ordinance rezoning, 7.9 plus or minus acres of property located east of Creek Shore Trail between Letha Street and Turnbull Bay Road from county A2A Rural Agriculture Airport to city PUD planned unit development, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Are you familiar with the request?
Yes.
Is it consistent with the comp plan and your recommendation on this rezoning?
Yes, it is consistent, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Would any member of the commission or the applicant like to question Mr. Fields on his testimony? Commissioner Clody?
Just as clarification, even though we're zoning at PUD and we know what it may eventually be, we're not at this point amending the Florida Days PUD.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other members wish to question Mr. Fields on his testimony? If not, we'll hear from the applicant if you would like to speak on this item and any witnesses you would choose.
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, I really don't have anything else to add to it. Again, this is going to be a piece of open space and if you've got any questions for me, I'm here.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Seeing none. We'll hear from members of the public, any members of the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider the rezoning, is there a motion to adopt ordinance 29-19 to rezon approximately 7.9 acres, look at on Creek Shore Trail?
I will make that motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Kelly, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Clody?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Ordinance 29-19 is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Ordinance 30-19, second reading and public hearing, which if adopted would amend Chapter 66 by establishing penalties for operating a construction and demolition debris removal service without a franchise agreement in place. City Attorney will read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 30-19, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordnances, amending Chapter 66, solid waste, to create Section 66112 penalties, providing for public hearing, providing for codification, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have a staff report?
Mayor, if you recall, we discussed this item and I had a conversation with one of the vendors and he is still not satisfied with the language that we have changed. I just got an email just now, a few hours ago, that we need to meet with him again, so I would suggest that maybe we would postpone this for the next meeting and so we could look into some of the issues that he's looking at.
Just for clarification, this would be, this ordinance applies to those with the valid franchise, or I'm sorry, without the valid franchise agreement, so that's why he's bringing that up.
Okay. I support staff's request to postpone this. Do we need to postpone it to a date certain, Carrie?
Yes, we have a newspaper ad that applies, so we need to continue it to a date certain to preserve that.
If the next meeting, if the commission supports it, will the next meeting be enough time, Kelly?
Okay.
Any objection by the commission to postpone this item to the next meeting?
I just have a question, is this the same vendor who's already been fined by code?
No.
Okay.
Okay. See no objections, this item is tabled to the next meeting, do we need to make a motion on it?
Yeah, I need a formal motion.
I will make that motion.
We have a motion?
I would like to know the exact date so I can...
June 25th.
June 25th is the next meeting, at 6:30.
Thank you.
I have a motion?
Second.
Have a second, City Clerk? Kelly?
Commissioner Clody?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
This item is continued until the June 25th meeting at 6:30. Nine, ordinance's first readings. First reading on ordinance which if adopted would prohibit single-use plastics on city property, city attorney will read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 17-19, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordnances, amending Sections 38-111, 38-112, and 38-113 to provide for the prohibition of the sale or use of polystyrene and polypropylene food service articles and plastic straws by city contractors and temporary vendors on city property, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. I noticed several in the audience that were here that spoke in favor, I think, on this ordinance before. Just so you're clear what's happening, this is a first reading, so this isn't the final passage, it will then come back for a second reading, which is what we just went through on all those previous items. So this is kind of reading the end of the record. Commission, as we've done, again, we're not voting on this item tonight, but if there's any substantive changes we need to discuss to pass along to staff before second reading, now's the chance to do so. Second reading and public hearing will be held at the regular commission meeting scheduled June 25th, 2019. Anything to pass along to staff on this, any substantive changes?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Should we include the word polystyrene in the announcement? I mean, because as you read it, it just says "single-use plastics," but the ordinance in fact also affects other items.
In the part that he reads?
Yeah, or that we publish.
Well, then the newspaper ad will have this title, which includes polystyrene and...
Good question.
Thank you.
Keeps us on our toes, man.
He does.
Yeah. All right. Item B. Item B, ordinance 31-19, conduct the first reading, which if adopted would approve amendments to the budget, city attorney will read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 31-19, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordnances, amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 6, Finance, Division 5 Budget, Sections 2, 442, and 2, 443, to provide for adoption of the annual budget by resolution and amendments, providing for codification, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Gentlemen, I'm going to go quick, so y'all jump in if you've got comments. Second reading and public hearing will be held at the regular commission meeting scheduled for June 25th, 2019. Item C, 32-19, first reading, which if adopted would approve the amendments to the Code of Ordnances, Division 3, expenditures, contracts, and purchases, city attorney.
Ordinance number 32-19, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordnances, amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 6, Finance, Division 3, expenditures, contracts, and purchases, Section 2, 371, to provide for the establishment of purchasing policies and procedures by resolution, deleting Sections 2, 372, 2, 373, 2, 374, and 2, 375, providing for codification, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Second reading and public hearing will be held at the regular city commission meeting scheduled for June 25th, 2019. Ordinance 33-19, first reading on ordinance which if adopted would repeal ordinance 37-17 and revoke the tax exemption granted to TAF USA LLC, city attorney will read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 33-19, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 37-17, revoking a three-year ad valorem property tax exemption for TAF USA LLC, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Second reading and public hearing will be held at the regular city commission meeting scheduled for June 25th, 2019. Ordinance 34-19, first reading of an ordinance which if adopted would amend Chapter 78, traffic and vehicles, city attorney will read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 34-19, an ordinance amending the New Smyrna Beach Code of Ordnances, amending Chapter 78, traffic and vehicles, Article 2, parking, Section 7842, stopping, standing, or parking prohibited in specific places, intersection parking, amending Section 7849 to increase fines for parking violations, adding a new Section 7854 to codify parking regulations for certain city facilities, providing for codification, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
I'm going to read this before I forget it. Second reading and public hearing will be held at the regular commission meeting scheduled for June 25th, 2019. Carrie, one question, does anything we just changed on that other ordinance with parking, I thought these two were linked in some way, do we need to adjust any language or...
No, the resolutions were separate.
Okay, just making sure. All right, item 10, Boards of Commissions, Historic Preservation Committee, consider the reappointment of members to serve three-year terms. All right. Anne Marie, Anne Maria O'Meara has displayed the willingness and desire to serve as a member and submitted a voluntary application. We have two current members whose term has expired, Harriet Winneker and Virginia Scal. Each of those members has displayed the willingness and desire to continue serving. Over the past year, one of them has two absences, Winneker has two, and Scal has accrued four absences.
Mayor?
Yes.
There was also a last-minute application that was submitted, I just made a copy and handed it out.
Thank you for that.
Sure, and that person's name was Anne Scalph, so the staff recommendation was to consider the reappointment of member Harriet Winneker as well as the appointment of Anna Maria O'Meara and Anne Scalph. So it changed.
Okay, hang on, let me. Anne Scalph, okay. So we need to nominate, how many vacancies do we have?
Three.
Three, right?
Two vacancies right now, two people are up for reappointment, they're recommending one out of the two for reappointment, so three.
Mr. Mayor?
Nominations, yes.
Yes, I will nominate O'Meara and Winneker. I appreciate the third persons submitting their application, but I will not consider any application that's been submitted after our agendas have gone out because I don't have time to talk to them and I don't have time to evaluate them.
Okay. We have a nomination for, I'm sorry, tell me again, that was Winneker and...
O'Meara.
O'Meara. Okay. Any other nominations?
It would be the reappointment of Winneker.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, reappointment of Winneker.
Yes.
And the nomination of O'Meara. I agree with Commissioner Clody, it's, I think it's a disservice to the advisory boards, to us and to the applicant to consider it on short notice. I certainly will consider it and certainly appreciate their willingness to serve, so no slight to them, just a timing thing, we'll get there.
And their application will remain on file.
Absolutely, yep. Hearing no other nominations, we want to vote on those two nominations. Do we have a motion to accept the reappointment and appointment of the two members named by the commissioner? You made a motion, didn't you? I'm sorry, do you have a second?
Second.
Kelly, if you would.
Commissioner Clody?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Thank you.
To be clear, I think we would be okay considering that application for the remaining vacancy at a future meeting, given more time to review. Item B, Neighborhood Council, accept the voluntary resignation of member Fannie Hudson, consider the reappointment or appointment of nine members to the Neighborhood Council to serve staggered terms to expire either May 21st, May 28th, 2021, or May 28th, 2022. So, maybe a little bit to go through here, established by Resolution 2413, as amended effective April 9th, 2019, so something we voted on not too long back. The members should be appointed by the commission, each commissioner shall nominate two regular members for appointment, that's what we're going to do tonight. Each appointee must reside in the zone represented by the commissioner nominating the member. The mayor shall nominate one regular member, I get, only one, he'll get two, who shall reside in the city. The nine members of the council shall serve staggered two-year terms at the pleasure of the commission and may be removed from the Neighborhood Council by the commission with or without cause. I just have a couple of suggestions for the commission, so we're each going to make, say So we're each going to make, say, we're, you all are each going to make two nominations. They have to be in your zone. I would suggest you stagger, if each of you take a stagger term. Take one person, nominate them through the 2022 timeframe, one person through the 2021 timeframe. I think that'll give us appropriate staggering. I'm seeing some head nods from our Neighborhood Council members back there. And also, I think we're going to vote en masse, but I ask us all to be respectful of each other's appointees and the desires of that, so.
Make a motion to accept the resignation.
Second.
Of the current member.
That was next on my list. Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Have a motion and a second?
Second.
We have a second already to accept the resignation. Kelly, if you would call the roll.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Resignation of Fannie Hudson is hereby accepted.
Mr. Mayor?
Do you have some comments or questions? Yes.
No, I have nominations.
Oh, nominations, all right.
As Zone 1, I nominate Randy Hartman for a three-year term.
Randy Hartman?
No.
He's nine years old.
I'm going to get him over inside of town sooner or later. Randy Hartman for a three-year term. Lisa Martin for a two-year term. And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I understand you have an appointment. I have a third person in my district, Linda Palmer, who's very qualified. Only a suggestion, of course.
Okay. So we have two nominations from Commissioners Zone 1. Mr. Sacks, what is your pleasure?
I have a question for my clerk. I already have two members from Zone 2 that are serving on the board.
So we're...
That prohibits me?
You can reappoint. I think we're reappointing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I will move to reappoint my members.
And choose the term.
And you're choosing the term.
The term. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Deborah Bell for the first term.
Okay. So, Commissioner Sacks, I think he's wanted to reappoint Deborah Bell for the 2021 term. And would that be then Teresa Bowen for the 2022 term?
Correct.
Okay.
Will serve. Thank you.
Commissioner McGurk?
Marvel Richards for the first term. And we have a lack of... So you, we're talking about reappointments, yeah.
Yeah, you can reappoint or nominate, yep.
Well, hold on a second. It's a challenge, because I guess I'm, it's, I'm not nominating somebody under the, under the situation I'm required then to nominate or to appoint Daphne Berish.
So I don't think you're required to. If you wanted to wait for other applications, you could absolutely do that. I think that would be, that would be well within your purview.
I have not had a chance to talk to Ms. Berish, so...
You'd like to wait?
I would like to wait for that second term. Because we've kind of changed this up a little bit. I know that Teresa Bowen was somebody that the commission helped me put on for Jake's own. I also see in Aaron Thrasher, who's not in my zone, who I think would be a great fit for this. So this, it gets a little, like, maybe we've overthought this a little bit. It's gotten pretty technical. But anyway, I'd like to, I'd like to at least postpone my appointment for that second term.
So reappoint Marvel Richards for the 2021 term, and then you're going to come back to us at a future meeting?
Yes, thank you.
For applications, okay? Vice Mayor?
I'd like to nominate Elizabeth Bell for the first, for the 2021 term.
Okay.
And hold my second until I have a qualified, or have an applicant.
Okay.
Hopefully, they're qualified.
Hopefully, they qualify. I... I believe that Zone 4 is our most rapidly growing zone. A lot of changes in that zone has been underrepresented. And I think we heard Randy Herman talk about this earlier. I would like to make an appointment in that same zone. There's no others available, as the vice mayor's pointed out. I certainly appreciate Linda Palmer, Ellen Thrasher. I know those are all probably great applicants, but I would like to look for someone in Zone 4, so I'm going to postpone mine as well. So with that, Kelly, I have scribbled notes. I'm going to bet yours are way better. Do you want to just maybe read them back to make sure everybody's okay, and then we'll make a motion and go forth?
Sure. I have Commissioner Colode nominated Randy Herman and Lisa Martin. And he wanted Linda Palmer to be considered for whoever had that zone.
Got it.
Side note. Commissioner Sacks nominated Deborah Bell and Teresa Bowen.
Teresa Bowen, yep.
Commissioner McGurk nominated Marvel Richards.
Yep.
And Vice Mayor Hartman nominated Ms. Bell. And Mayor Owen, you postponed.
Yep. And McGurk postponed his second. And all of those, I believe the order you read them was 2021 term, 2022 term, so.
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept?
Like to make a motion?
Are you good?
His was the opposite, just for record clarification, so.
Okay.
Sorry, wasn't listening.
No, it's all right. Did you catch that?
Yes.
So the clerk, okay. All right, we have a motion to accept the nominations as presented by the commission. Do I have a second? Jake made that motion, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Kelly, if you would call the roll, please.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your service or willingness to serve if you were not appointed. Next item up, Mayor and Commission Reports. Begin to my... Left with the Vice Mayor.
I think the meeting that we had yesterday with the Turnbull Creek Committee was an excellent meeting. I think we, there was a lot of positives that came out of that meeting. I certainly appreciate all that they did, all that staff did to work with them, because I know they had a lot of questions, so I certainly appreciate that. Along with that, in case you missed the notice, our planning staff won awards at their annual planning meeting this past week, so we commend them for that. They're doing an excellent job, and I certainly do appreciate everything that they do. I'd like to make a motion to bring the property at 572 West Washington off of the table for discussion. We tabled the property at 572 at our last meeting. We put it on the table.
Those go on the $95,000?
Yeah.
Yeah.
With no specific time limit?
Okay.
So I'd like to move it off the table and bring it up for discussion.
Okay.
Now or later at the meeting?
You want to discuss, yeah. He's made a motion to bring it off the table, so.
I'll second.
All right, we have a second. Please.
All right. I think we had a lot of discussion yesterday about what is a fair price, what's a correct price. We had two appraisals done on this piece of property. The seller was amenable to selling it at the lowest price. This actually does not come out of the general fund. It's a CRA project. It's for, which is designated for affordable housing. The discussion was that we were going to give the property to the Housing Authority, but they said it was going to be a long-term plan, maybe a year or two out. So, and I know that there is currently a sale contract present, which has some time restraints on it. I'm just afraid that if we push this out too far, that we may lose the opportunity to buy a piece of property within the city that we can use for affordable housing, so...
Do you have the address of that just right in front of you, perchance?
572.
572 Washington.
572 Washington, got it. Thank you. Discussion by the commission. Commissioner Colode?
Oh, no.
Oh, you assumed the power.
I'm just waiting to see what comes next.
So I'll jump off. I just Apple Maps'd it, and two minutes away, we heard from an applicant today who bought a piece of property for $7,000, a piece of dirt. And that's what we're buying, this piece of dirt, for $95,000. That's painful to me.
You have appraisals, though. You don't have appraisal on this $14,000 piece of property, because he has liens against it.
We know the liens.
So, I mean, they're not even apples-and-oranges-sized properties.
Yeah, it may not be.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But I mean, we had quite a bit of discussion yesterday about appraisals and what's fair market value, and if you truly have two independent appraisals, that that is the fair market value. If you want to tote it down, that's fine, but I think leaving it on the table until a time uncertain is not the right thing to do. So I think we need to, you know...
So what was the direction we gave to staff? I thought we had asked them to go back and, do you recall?
Lower the price, I think that's what I...
Yeah, go back and negotiate more. Okay.
So is our contract time certain, or is, do they have another contract on it?
We have a contract to buy. I'm not sure, but I believe it has a July date.
Yeah, so that's their offer. We haven't executed it, obviously.
Right.
But there, yeah, there's a time to accept. I'd have to pull it up to see if we're already beyond that or not.
So, I respect your willingness and your desire to want to do this. My opinion on this is it's not exactly the same as the property, the, that we voted on, that the voters wanted. It's a little different in my eyes. I am not ready at this time with no new evidence that suggests that that price is even remotely reasonable. If you want to get into the weeds on it, I think that the estimate, or the appraisals that came back for the Turnbull land buy was reasonable. I think it was reasonable to pay that amount, and I don't see anything, it just doesn't feel right to me at this time.
If I may just suggest we not re-litigate yesterday, let's focus on, I know you're trying to connect the two, but the issue is, do we want to remove this item from the table?
Yes.
And direct staff to purchases? And any other comments from the commission? Don't have to. All right.
Well, I do comment. The, I do think we should explore the other option also. I agree we should take this off the table, or set a date when we're actually going to discuss it, hopefully with the information on the other property. If we can get another piece of property that really helps out, serves the purpose, for $95,000 less, or less the lien amount, it should be considered. We have limited funds in that district, and we have places we want to spend it. That's all.
Okay. Yeah, I think the, as I said at the meeting, the appraised value, I think contemplated a building that could, you know, had value. And so, and we're not buying it for the building value, we would demolish that. So I'd be open to looking at pieces of dirt, like the one that we saw earlier, and, because I think we could get a better deal, and make the dollars go further. Made a motion and a second? I would support putting a time certain, though. I mean, if that, if that makes a difference, just to, sort of driving towards something, I have no issue. I don't want to leave it open-ended. I just wanted to give staff as much flexibility as they needed to work on this, but if, do you think a date, I mean, have you had discussions where you think of putting a date, and do you have a date you might propose? To at least be done with it?
We don't meet in July, right?
No.
Yeah, bring it back up at the August 13th meeting.
Okay. So, it's getting late. Your motion, I think, was just to move it off the table.
Take it off the table and set a time certain.
Okay. Just slide amendment, are you okay with that amendment as a second, or?
Yes.
Okay. So, time certain being August 13th. Is that the right date?
Yes.
All right. So we have, everybody clear on the motion? So the motion is take it off the table, discuss it date certain, August 13th. Hopefully, staff will bring new information. Clerk, if you would call the roll on that, please.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, still your time.
I think at some point during the meeting, we need to make an interim city clerk?
Just going to do that under City Attorney's report, but yeah.
I'll save that, then that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioner McGurk?
I have no report, ma'am. Thank you.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes, extensive. I'll be brief. Most importantly, I want to thank the Kennedy family. Their son, Devin, tragically died in a surf accident, but his epitaph lives on. The family has cleaned from Mary McLeod Bethune Beach to the inlet. It was a long task. They were helped the other Saturday by Linda Henline and the Keep NSB Clean. So, and we joined them for a little bit, and we're always, it's funny, we're grateful to clean up the beach. It's strange, but it's very rewarding, and thanks, many thanks to them. It came to my attention that the Little Theater, a venerable time-honored tradition in our city, is requesting a crosswalk LED sign. So I'll bring this up later for your consideration. Staff knows about it. I don't know if it will be allowed, but I think they desperately need one there. Traffic goes by, it's marked 40, they go by at 50, right by the Publix there. You all know where it is. And you also probably know that I visited the county council on behalf of the neighbors in the avenues. Both the tortoises and the residents did not like the features that they wanted to build on 16th. They proclaimed, you're just, you don't want it in your backyard. Well, it is a major detriment to the sand dunes, and I just don't understand the reasoning why they wanted to put in a 11-spot paved parking area that will be a total detriment to our neighborhood and the city. We already have enough traffic. Kudos also on Plastics to the Best Western Hotel and the Sea Vista. I think they both stopped using single-use plastics, so many thanks to them for joining in, and we didn't have to mandate it, and they certainly wanted to do it. Also, kudos go out to Carol Hargie and Johnny Bledsoe on their retirements. I have a question. Chief, please, if we could get the Magnolia study finalized, so we could finally call it, we'll do that hopefully soon.
As soon as he's got some...
There are some good results and some negative feedback as well on that. And for Brian, he's not here now, but I would like us to still consider clear-cutting of trees in our city. I believe we may have some legal leeway there in conjunction with the, either the Forestry Service or the State of Florida, where we can save some trees on properties. And I also had concerns about the city's beach walkover ramps for handicapped people. They have been destroyed, and I hope we can get those soon. The price tag is really high. I think we have about three ramps. And gentlemen, finally, I must persist. On behalf of one family, one desperate family that needs our help, we are here to help people. And I'm speaking of the family that has a child with disabilities. In fact, they have two children with disabilities. They are still requesting, in fact, the hope keeps growing, that they may someday have a deaf child sign for their property. It's a small thing that we can do. It's not like we're going to put signs everywhere. All of our neighbors, including the county, support signs. They all do it. Port Orange does it. Edgewater encourages it. The county encourages it. May I get a second for discussion? Or possibly, hopefully, a unanimous decision to provide them with a sign? So I'm making a motion, and second, hopefully, from anyone.
So, I'm hearing no seconds to the motion. Remind the commissioner, I know you're passionate about this. I understand it, and this is the third time we've made the motion, and I can't explain for my colleagues, and if they want to speak to it, they're welcome to, why they don't want to make a second. But we're not receiving a second, so...
Mayor, may I remind you, I believe you can hand the gavel over and make a second yourself if you're eager to.
I don't, I don't have to hand the gavel over to do so. I don't have to hand the gavel over to do so. But I also will do that with great rarity, just out of kind of tradition, if nothing else. So, and even so, if I have, if I have three colleagues who won't even second the motion, seconding is not going to, not going to do much, so. motion, seconding is not gonna, not gonna do much, so.
Yeah, that's true.
So, any, anything else to, only report?
I'm finished, thank you for your patience.
Commissioner Colletti?
Two things. Glad to see the plastic styrofoam ordinance moving forward. I think we should take another step, though. I'm not suggesting we change the ordinance. Is, we've had two groups come here who support this effort. I think we should coordinate with them a little better. They are publishing people who cooperate and don't cooperate outside of us, restaurants. I just heard of two more tonight. I think we should get some type of proposal from the staff as to how we can publish those things. I would like to see that on the website. I'd like to see a list of who supports it, just to give that information to the public and let them decide. We made it, or we will make a decision on it for our properties, but I would like that information, whichever way our ordinance goes, I would like that information on the website. Anyhow. The second thing, I have a statement to read about the Timber Trace properties and that, that idea. Purchase a Timber Trace.
The ones from yesterday?
Turnbull Trace.
Turnbull, okay. Just making sure it's talking about the same thing.
I wrote this just as I was leaving.
There's a subdivision named Timber Trace, I think, and we're not buying it, so I just want to make sure.
No, we're buying the other one. Okay. Purchase, of the Turnbull Trace property is very important. Voters approve the bond issue, knowing the possible cost of the acquisition. Florida is contributing 40% of the cost. It would be foolish not to accept the grant and purchase the property. It does not mean we're paying the right price. Yes, two appraisals were obtained and are not unreasonable as to the lot cost. However, the data supplied to the appraisers was grossly inadequate to determine the fair amount to be paid for the property. We've been boxed in by the terms the previous commission established with the trust for public lands. There was not sufficient oversight through that process. As our mayor stated yesterday during our deliberations, we must learn from our mistakes. We're paying more than we would have if the oversight had been handled properly. There are a lot of funds remaining within the bond issue, and I personally will not vote for any purchases that have not been fully vetted for accuracy and price. This has been an expensive lesson that we learned. It can't happen again. We must forget that we will be financing this person, purchase, as I stated previously, to being elected. I will not allow our millage rate to be increased. I will offer cuts in expenditures where necessary to avoid any such increase in the millage rate. Thank you.
I'm going to respond to that, Mayor.
And I wish I could read a little better later at night.
Okay. I know you want to respond.
Got to respond, Mayor.
I'm hesitant to allow mayor and commission reports to turn into rebuttals, but I don't know what the precedent is, but.
I'm done, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'd love to hear it.
Keep it, keep it brief is all I ask.
Commissioner Colletti, I take exception to the implications that you just said. You've implied that we did not do our due diligence properly, adequately, and appropriately. I take exception to that. And if you want to back that up with a certified legal opinion, I welcome you to do that. You bring in experts at your cost. But I do not appreciate you playing politics with the integrity of the staff, the other electeds, and all of those who have worked so hard at trying to get that Turnbull land bought. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right.
Can I add something real quick? This has nothing to do with that. But it is, but it is, I'm sorry. We're going to be out of here in a second. That wonderful task force that my guest does to create, there may be a willingness for them to stay on as a conservation committee.
Yeah.
And so, I did a bit of research to begin with. Maybe we can take a look at that.
Yeah. I think we agreed yesterday at the meeting.
There are major cities that, that are doing it, so I'll do a little more research, bring it back for your purview.
Please do. Yeah, I think we're, I think we're all, all in favor of that. So, a couple, a couple of things. First of all, I think the air conditioning went off, because it's getting really hot up here.
That's just it.
Or maybe it's just been the voting tonight, I don't know.
Kelly's what.
Let me go back on a, on a couple of things. First of all, Vice Mayor, when I, when I made the comment I made about trusting staff, not implying anybody else up here doesn't, by, by no stretch. I'm simply trying to, to justify, not justify, but clarify where, where I land and telegraph that position for future decisions. I put a lot of stock in staff reports. Your, your point was well made, Commissioner McGurk, there's a time when we take leadership, there's a time when that burden falls to us. But I've had many discussions with Brian. I think he is, I think our, our staff is bringing some fresh perspective from outside that, that may be new to New Smyrna, but not new to planning and zoning in, in general. And so, there will be a, a growth and an evolution there. It's going to be tough, tonight's decision is tough. I'm still, I'm still torn, I'm still not happy about it, it's still weighing heavily on me. You know, these are the, these are, these are the reasons we get paid the big bucks. Laugh, laugh. So, not easy. You want to try to do the right thing, you want to incent all the right behaviors. So, anyway, but I just want to make that crystal clear, not disparaging anyone else's opinion of staff up here. I know we all respect the, the time and energy that they, that they put in. As a, as anecdotal information, I, I was talking to, talking to Colin earlier and just kind of talking through some of the, the staff time and what this commission has, has really kind of raised the bar on that, pushing hundreds of hours. We've had 14 special meetings, this commission, between November and, and the, the break coming up, 14 special meetings, which is a considerable increase over the same timeframe in, in previous years. And if you figure for every hour of us meeting, there can be upwards of 10 or 20 hours of aggregate staff time to prepare, and that's probably a low-end estimate, it's probably even higher than that. So, we, we've added hundreds of hours that, that staff is, is putting in, and I got to say, I think, as a whole, doing a fantastic job. And not only that, but we're in a time of transition. We, we have interim city manager, we have a change in the clerk's office, so I, I think staff's doing, doing an amazing job. Want to address Commissioner Colletti's comments earlier. You know, there, there are a lot of things that it is, it is tough to lead in this setting. I will tell you, it's one of the most challenging things I've ever done, to not be able to call up my colleagues and have candid discussions without having to, without having to, to air everything. It is extremely tough. It puts all of us and staff in uncomfortable positions. And I can tell the public this, this commission and this staff is extremely dedicated, although it hamstrings us considerably to the sunshine laws. And everything that happens up here, it's, too much of our frustrations, we abide by the sunshine law. So, I, there are, there are things that I wish I could do different, there are things that I think all of us wish could be different. There are discussions that, you know, we can have one day, but I think staff does a really good job of keeping us in the loop, advising us, so we all have the same information to act on, how we interpret it, how we act on it may be different, but I think they do a good job without relaying information of how we each feel about things, which is something they can't do, which does, again, put all of us in a tight spot, especially when it comes to dealing with difficult situations. So, it is what it is. I'm, I'm proud of where we are, I'm proud of how we've gotten there. I think we're making great progress and strides for the city and, and all involved. And the, the last thing I would say to, to the comments that were just made, I'm, I'm much less concerned about the past and I'm more worried about the, the future. We, we have a lot of work ahead of this commission, we have a lot of work ahead of the city, and sitting up here, the one thing I, I realized, I think I said this to somebody the other day, it may have been Kerry or Cal or somebody, so you know, one thing I've noticed, the last folks to criticize elected officials are prior elected officials, because they recognize just how difficult these roles can be and just how difficult some of these decisions are. And as I mentioned earlier, the last time that project came tonight, I was sitting back in that corner, and it was a lot easier to sit back there and say, oh, this is how I'd vote, than it was to sit up here and say, how I'd vote. So, it's easy to look back with perfect hindsight, and I've done it, and say, you know, we could have done things better. And the reality is, we all could do things better, and we'll look at the end of our terms and look back and say, we could have done it better. We can learn and grow from some things. But we can do that in a professional way that doesn't disparage previous commissions, previous staff, previous leadership. I'm focused on tomorrow. I'm focused on where we go next. I think we've got the right team to get there. I think we've got a good blend of, of thought and diversity of opinion, which is great. That's where innovation comes from, is from challenging each other a little bit, putting a lot of good ideas on the table, and having a staff that's able to support all of that. So, I want to put all of that behind us. I'm focused on the June 25th meeting and the progress we've got coming up. We got a lot of good things ahead of us, and I urge my, my colleagues, we're focused on tomorrow, we're focused on doing good things for the city, and we'll, we'll debate all the other stuff some, some other life. So, that was all that I had. I appreciate that. City manager report.
In the, in your package, there's a letter from the ISO regarding the building departments. It's a good news. They actually, for the one and, and two family, they're classified as, as two, and then for the commercial, they're classified as three. Obviously, the ISO, they do the building department fire, and also they do our engineering for the community rating system. The citizen request tracker, there was one item there that Commissioner Hartman pointed out, and we have corrected it, Commissioner Hartman, it moved, it was under the completed and it's not.
Which one was that?
Just want to remind you, this is about the Endy River Lagoon Assurance Plan.
I saw that one.
And I think it was that we have, moving forward with the consultant, not that it's done.
Yeah, yep.
The bids for the city hall annex, they were open today at 3:00. We had five bidders. The lowest was A.G. Pfeifer, who is the contractor who did Live Oak Civic Center. Their bid was about 3, 3.9 million. The engineer's estimate is about 4.05, and that was without, they had two ad alternates. One of the ad alternates, he had a very low price, which was the generator, he had like 12,500, and the others had like 200 and 250. Michelle is meeting with him tomorrow to just go over his numbers and make sure that they are comparing fairly close to the other bidders, and hopefully, if everything is okay, we'll be moving that item forward to you to see at the 25th meeting. Want to remind you of the ribbon cutting on the 27th Avenue, which is the 28th at 10:00. And again, the Reed Patella, they informed me today to, that they will, starting in August, the buses are reduced, and they will use the front as the bus pickup and the interior for the parent pickup. He had two other issues today about the buses and the lifters, so we'll look at that as well. The second item on the CEM report is, as a result of.
Before you go to that real quick, any questions from staff or anything else on the city manager report besides the HR director?
Keith, can you explain a little bit about the generator? Because I thought when we purchased this new generator, it was purchased large enough to do both buildings.
When they did, I guess, the sizing on, on this one, somehow they missed the calculations on it. And that was our staff with the UC. That is the straightforward answer, Commissioner.
Appreciate it, Mayor.
Appreciate it, yeah. It happens.
Colin and Chief, thanks for your work with Reed Patella. Really appreciate it.
Yeah. The second item, oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
Any questions?
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
As a result of Mrs. Hargie's retirement, we have advertised for a new HR director. Few months ago, we en contribute five applicants, they're all qualified applicants. The committee consists of the city attorney, the fire chief, and myself, and who else we have? And Carol. We, all of us have selected Renina Fuller. She works at Flagler County Sheriff's Office, she's been there for seven years. Very qualified on the application, however, by mistake, she marked that she is not qualified, so she sent us, instead of having the S, she put the no. And Commissioner Hartman picked on that one.
Of course. Doesn't surprise me.
But anyway, we, we contacted her to make sure that, that she was, she didn't do that on purpose, so if the commission approves her appointment tonight, she will start on the 24th.
Okay.
Staff is working very hard to get your items that you request, so if we forget something, then just remind us, please, because it's so many items going on and.
I agree.
And so much stuff going on.
Yep. So, we'll, we'll pause there, per, per the charter, and Kerry, do you have that language? Because I'm going to do this, I don't want to talk about it real quick. Go ahead.
Another thing that popped up today is there is a meeting Friday about the mooring field design. Is that right?
Friday at 5:30.
Yes, so, you know, that popped up today, so I just wanted to make everybody aware of that if you haven't read it yet, here at City Hall.
Are we, are we in that? It's a public, is it a public meeting? Oh, okay, it's not a commission.
Talking about design standards for the mooring field.
You're supposed to, that you got an email from Michelle?
Yeah, I got the email. I just, I didn't read it, the way he was saying it, I thought we were supposed to, I thought it was a commission meeting.
No, I was just, you know.
All right.
We wanted to have that meeting prior last week, and we couldn't because of the other meetings. We have a presentation for fines on Saturday, this coming Saturday, and usually, I would like to have a public meeting before I go to fines, so that's what Michelle is doing.
All right, and the human resources director, Kerry's going to read us the language. Basically, this, the commission per this language needs to approve this, so Kerry, go ahead.
So, in chapter four of your charter, it talks about the city manager's powers and duties, and he appoints and removes all officers, employees of the city, except that the appointment and removal of department heads shall be subject to the approval of the city commission. So, that's kind of why we find ourselves in this awkward position of you all have to approve someone you have not interviewed.
Yeah, and I have some suggestions on that, but for this case, I would ask for a motion from the commission to approve the hiring of the human resources director as pointed out by Colin.
So, I'm moved. Thank you.
I have a motion in a second. Cindy, Kelly, if you would call the roll.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Colletti?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
So, congratulations, we look forward to, to her joining the team. My, and we're running out of time, so I want to be really brief with this, but my concern as we talk through this is, it puts us and staff, I feel, and applicants in an awkward position to have this done right here. Because I'm now voting on someone that I've never met, I've read a resume. If I voted no, and two other commissioners join me, you know, if someone who has publicly applied for a job, they've got their resume out there, has known that they're trying to leave their current employer, and then we vote them down, and then what does that, it puts them in a bad situation for their family. I, I don't think that's the intent of the charter, although I can't say that I'm the interpreter of the charter, but I'd suggest if the commission was comfortable with it, a way that would still give us that discretion, but eliminate that, and that difficulty that I see is, and it's what I've seen quite common in other circumstances like this, if there's a vacancy, Colin approaches the commission for approval to fill the vacancy, and we could even put some budget parameters on that, but then we're really delegating that power and authority for him to build his team to him, or, or any acting city manager. And then we, we holding them accountable to those decisions that, that they make. And so, that's just a, for consideration, we don't have to solve this tonight, in fact, I'll let you all just kind of ruminate on it, and we can maybe talk about it at another meeting. But just something to think about, about the way we've, we're doing things and some proposed changes and potential pitfalls to it, so.
Certainly should flag that for the charter review committee.
Yeah, for sure. But even in the meantime, I think we could make a tweak that would help everyone involved, because, I mean, this just puts everyone in a tough spot, so.
I'm going to lay this lead.
Hope nobody else retires, yeah. Anything, Kelly, on the, on the clerk's side? No, okay. City attorney, I think we've got two things to go over.
Yes, first is the acting city manager contract. At your May 28th meeting, the direction given to me was to increase Colin's salary to that of Pam's, add in the car allowance, his other benefits to remain the same, the pay would be retroactive to May 15th, the effective date is actually June 12th, provide for a six-month period, so you guys can have that discussion at, at your December 10th city commission meeting to figure out where, where you're going to go after that. So, you've seen the contract, any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Any discussion on, on this item? If not, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
To accept the contract as presented and authorize me to execute on behalf of the city?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Kelly?
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Colletti?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next, do you want to appoint acting city clerk?
Yep, and I would say we follow the same as we did last time, especially given the, the hour. If we, I've, I've talked to Kelly, I think she is minimal to serving as acting city clerk. I think she's been proven to be more than capable. Let's say for this meeting and between now and the next one, if we could appoint her as acting, acting city clerk, in the meantime, commission, have a chance to, to reach out to her, talk to her, and then we could talk about this at a future meeting. reach out to her, talk to her, and then we could talk about this at a future meeting. Again, same thing we've done with, with Khaled. Any objections to that? If not, do I have a motion to appoint Kelly as acting city clerk?
So I'm moved. Second.
Did you get all that? All right. Well, I heard, I heard Vice Mayor as the motion maker and I heard, I think it was Sacks as a second. Was it correct? Okay. All right. If you would call the roll on that.
Commissioner Colletti?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. We real appreciate you stepping in. You've done a fantastic job in the past and, and you'll do nothing but that. Now, look at that. That's the faithful fans right there.
I, I'm sure you'll have these minutes for us tomorrow.
No, no, she will not. She will go home to get a good night's sleep. City attorney, any other things to report?
Not at this time, thanks.
All right. With that, this meeting is adjourned. And then at good time.